Good afternoon, and now for day. The public hearing on Bill 166-37 is now called to order. Today is Thursday, November 9th. The time now is 2:00. In compliance with the open government law, the notice for this public hearing was posted on the GovGuam Public Notice Portal, K G T F P B S, Channel 12, and disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Friday, November 3rd, and on Tuesday, November 7th. We have two bills that we'll be hearing this afternoon. The first one is Bill 166-37 authored by Senator Brown, an act to add a new section E to Chapter 8, Title V, Guam Code annotated relative to requiring boards and commission audio files to be posted to their respective agencies, and Bill 188-37 introduced by Senator Telo Tadegui, co-sponsored by Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Chris Duane, Senator Jesse Luhan, Senator Frank Blas, and Senator Will Parkinson. An act to authorize the Guam Police Department, G P D, to use the unexpendable balance of the appropriations authorized by Section 2 of Public Law 35-22 for the purpose of procuring audiovisual recording equipment to be used during interviews conducted by G P D personnel. That being said, physical note for Bill 166-37 was requested on September 14. It was received. Physical note waiver was received and disseminated to all senators via email by the Committee on Rules on September 30. Those participating on behalf of the Bill 166-37 are invited to the panel. We have Speaker, Office of the Public Auditor's Office, Auditor B J Cruz here. General rules for this public hearing. Please provide my legislative staff with any document for photocopying and distribution. Panel members are asked to remain in the room for question or additional testimony that may be desired by members of the committee. Question and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual's testimony is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for these proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted and removed from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on, that you speak into the microphone. You state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that are here today. We have the author of the bill, Bill 166-37, Senator Joanne Brown, and Speaker Theresa Lai, and Senator Telo Tadegui. With that, I ask Senator Brown to please give her opening statement, and then we'll start with the Speaker giving his comments, testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the opportunity today to be able to have this bill on the agenda. It's a very simple bill. It's a one-page bill, but it also came at the request of our public auditor that's here, and certainly appreciate you, public auditor, for joining us this afternoon to testify on this bill. But this bill is pretty straightforward, and essentially what it's going to require, if it's passed into law, is that all boards and commissions will be required not only to have the live version of their board meetings heard publicly and accessible to the public, but now we essentially want them to keep their audio files of these board meetings and commission meetings available, so that certainly if any member of the public at any time wants to review or listen in, they would have the opportunity, access to this information. I think ultimately it provides a greater opportunity for transparency in our government and accessibility to our people anytime that they choose to have this information available and at their disposal. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to provide my opening comments on Bill 166.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Auditor Speaker Cruz, sure, for your testimony.
Thank you very much. How far, Mr. Chairman, Madam Speaker, and senators? Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 166-17. The Guam Office of Public Accountability supports the bill as it seeks to empower agencies with boards and commissions to post their audio recordings of their meetings on their respective websites, and then provide a link to the O P A for concurrent posting. It was in September 2012 when Public Law 12- I mean 31-233 required governing boards and commissions of all public corporations and departments of the government of Guam to provide recordings of each monthly's board and commission meeting to the O P A within seven days after the meeting. The O P A posts audits, audio files on its website upon receipt. Since then, the O P A has consistently posted meeting audio files for over 70 boards and commissions. Every week, the O P A receives multiple audio files in various formats. Some of the files can be small, as 800 megabytes, and sometimes the files are so big it requires staff from the agency to burn it onto a C D or a flash drive and deliver it to the O P A, which requires the staff to extract the file and determine it and download it before posting it onto the O P A website. If the agency gives us the flash drive, then we have to make another trip to pick it up, and then we are done downloading, after we are downloading. This has caused additional work for the agency and the O P A with our limited staff resources. It also consumes valuable space on our server. Through the years, we have seen an advancement in technology. Agencies are using their websites and social media such as YouTube and Facebook to stream their meetings. By simply having them send to the O P A the link to the post, it makes everyone's job a little easier because it increases efficiency without sacrificing operational openness and transparency. Lastly, one minor edit on line 13 and 14 to the change of the Office of the Public Auditor to the Office of Public Accountability. Our office first recommended in 2016, recommended this in 2016, and every year since, that since the initial law has been amended, to require the audio files be posted to the respective agencies' websites and have only the link to the audio files be filed or posted on the O P A website. We thank Senator Joanne Brown for introducing this legislation. It is simple, and it increases efficiency in our government. Should you have any questions, please contact our office, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker Cruz. Senator Brown, do you have any questions you want to pose? Otherwise, on the amendment, my staff's ready working on it to make the amendment. No questions? Madam Speaker, do you have any questions for the auditor?
Sure, thank you. Can I, thank you for being here. Can I just ask if posting these links on your website, I saw your testimony about the personnel involved, but what about the space on your website? Is that costing you?
It used to. Yes, it was very costly, but my staff, I mean, technology has improved so much that my staff got a new server, and it's now not costing us anything because we got a pretty good server. But it does cost us in time because we have to receive it, we have to download it and make sure that, it'd be easier if it was just links.
I'm just worried that there, we have some small agencies, they have a hard time even getting that equipment to broadcast it, as they have to do now, but do you think they would be able to afford putting this on their websites?
If they aren't, they can just send it to us. Some agencies really don't have websites, I know.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
Yeah, and so they wouldn't be able to comply with the law because they don't have a website to post it on. So if they don't either have a website or don't have the ability to post it on their website because they don't have that capability, because their website's not that large, we'd have no problem with continuing to receive that. It's, some of the large agencies where literally it...
Sure. They should be able to do that. So, do you, are you worried about in the changeover of administrations? I've seen, like, land management changed its website a couple times, and so I wasn't able to track their meetings on their websites, but do you think that would be a problem, like inconsistent website? Yours has probably been going for a long time now consistently, but I'm not sure if the other agencies are like that.
If, if it's posted on a website that they're no longer using, or they switched, if it's linked to us, anybody that comes onto our website will still be able to find it and link back to whatever, wherever it went.
All right, thank you. And I support this bill. It adds to, I'm curious now that we're requiring video conferencing or video transmission of the actual meetings, that this is only requiring audio. And do you have any comment on that? Is audio enough, or do you think we, since they're already doing video, we should require video to be posted on the website?
Either way, it's easier to watch a video than to just listen to an audio. And listening, and seeing the video, you also know whose voice it is. In listening sometimes to the audios, unless you know the characters, you're not really sure who it is that's speaking, and you think that sounds like board member so-and-so, but it might not be. And so, if they have, if they have the audio, I mean, if they have the video, they should post it on their website and just put the link to us. Or if they don't have the ability to post it on their website, to just send it to us because we can continue, we can and will continue to, to host ours, I mean, have it hosted, but we just don't want to have it as the major...
Sure. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And as I spoke to the author, who would just put audio and video? And whichever is applicable and they can do, then they just load it up. Senator Tadegui, do you have any question for the panel?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to my colleagues, and of course, my favorite auditor, even though he's the only one. No, actually, I thought about that, too, as putting and/or, you know, with video and audio would actually help, you know, this legislation, which I am in full support of. I think, you know, more transparency is needed on this island. We lack a lot of it, so I'm glad the author is keeping to her word and trying to provide this opened, open government and transparency to the people of Guam. However, you know, when we were talking earlier about links, it has become a lot easier these days. YouTube is one area that people are just utilizing quite a bit. I mean, the Guam Legislature uses YouTube, and it stays out there and makes it easier to actually just tag on the link instead of, you know, the whole recording where it's an M P file that was huge, right? Now you can just look at that, you know, H T T P blah 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 link that will take you there. Even people, other agencies that had, and I'm hoping they do this, like police department that comes up here to testify that they can actually avail of a link from the legislature to on their website, talking about cameras or talking about anything that could be of interest to the community, or even, you know, either both, video or audio. But you know, nowadays, more people are just doing both because it's so much easier. You know, they're doing the video and audio together. It's not like recordings in the past. So it should be and/or. Okay, I appreciate that comment that was made. Do you think, public auditor, that we should have law that requires all government agencies to have a website?
The only problem with that, Senator, is cost. Because I, with all due respect to all of you, I know that a number of them have come to me and just said that the cost of the notice requirement that has been made statutorys of the two, it really is costly for them to post, and they don't, they don't have that in their budget. And so if we're going to require it, we've got to provide the money that's going to be able to pay for that.
Okay. And if an agency that doesn't have a website, this bill will require them, if they have had any meetings, board meetings, that it would require them to provide you the link, or either the link or the recordings to be placed on your website? Is that correct?
Yes. Until such time as they have enough...
Their own website.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, there is a government of Guam website that's supposed to be one huge one that provides notices to the people of Guam through the governor's office. So I'm kind of curious, those agencies that said they can't afford it, actually, they don't need to. They are able to place any notices or information for their agency on that one major website that the government of Guam has. So I'm really surprised that any agencies give that excuse of not being, well, we don't have the money to do it. There are opportunities that can be posted, if I'm not mistaken. So I'll look into that to make sure that if we do do legislation, it does require some kind of public outreach to provide the information needed. But I greatly appreciate always having you in front of us and providing us with opportunities to introduce good legislation that would not only protect our island but also bring the transparency that it's really reaching for. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. There being no one else presenting to testify on this bill, this hearing is now concluded. I'll now ask Senator Brown to give her closing, and we will identify the amendments as required.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Certainly appreciate our public auditor being here this afternoon to provide testimony. I think the minor requests certainly can be accommodated, and we're hopeful, you know that our government agencies will comply. I think ultimately it's in the interest of our people to have access to their government and know ultimately how their money's being spent and if it's being spent responsibly. So I appreciate the initiative of our public auditor and providing our recommendation for this bill. With that, thank you very much. Thank you, and good afternoon.
Thank you, Senator Brown. I want to thank Speaker Cruz, public auditor, for being here and providing feedback and suggestion. Bill 166-37, public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is 2:16. Thank you. At this time, we will now proceed into Bill Number 188-37. Time now is 2:16. Reminder, public notice, in compliance with open government law, the notice for this public hearing was posted on GovGuam Public Notice Portal, K G T F P B S, Channel 12, and disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on February, November 3rd, and again on Tuesday, November 7th. Bill 188-37, introduced by Senator Telo Tadegui, co-sponsored by Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Chris Duane, Senator Jesse Luhan, Senator Frank Blas Jr., and Senator Will Parkinson. An act to authorize the Guam Police Department to use the unexpendable balance of the appropriations authorized by Section 2 of Public Law 35-22 for the purpose of procuring audiovisual recording equipment to be used during interviews conducted by the Guam Police Department personnel. Physical note for Bill 188-37 was requested on October 17th. It was received and disseminated to all senators via email by the Committee on Rules on October 27th. We have participated in the, in providing testimony as Chief Steve Ignacio. Reminder on the general rules for this public hearing. Please provide my legislative staff with any document for photocopying and distribution. Panel members are asked to remain in the room for question or additional testimony that may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual's testimony is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all personnel in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted from participating and will be removed from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title. I'd like to acknowledge again my colleagues that have joined me this afternoon. We have the author of the bill, Senator Telo Tadegui, Speaker Theresa Lai, and Senator Joanne Brown. With that, I'd ask Senator Tadegui to please give her opening on her bill. Thank you, ma'am.
How far, and, si tu es ma si, Madam, Mr. Chair, and everyone who's watching and joining us this afternoon in the efforts to support the Guam Police Department in carrying out their critical safety missions. Just a few weeks ago, allegations of police brutality in our community were brought to light. While it may be premature to take any side in this matter, it is clear that we need to do more to protect both the public and our law enforcement community. And we can do this by being proactive, just like my colleague, Senator Chris Barnett, who has introduced legislation to require that our police officers wear body cameras while on duty. In similar fashion, today we discussed my bill, Bill Number 188-37, an act to authorize the Guam Police Department to use the unexpendable balance of the appropriation authorized by Section 2 of Public Law 35-22 for the purposes of procuring audiovisual recording equipment to be used during interviews conducted by the G P D personnel. Incidents of police brutality and unnecessary force have been highlighted by national media too often, and I believe everyone deserves a fair shake in the conversation, both the public and the police officers. Police officers we trust and who charge first into danger. We can't always be there to judge for ourselves what happens, and without the proper equipment, how are we to defer any parts, any party's guilt or innocence? But we can take precautions. My team and I identified unused funds from a previous law I passed in the 35th Guam Legislature that authorized G P D to purchase and install security cameras in selected public spaces. I simply want to take this unused portion and utilize it to purchase and install audiovisual equipment in the police precincts identified by G P D. I believe this will go a long way in helping to protect everyone's best interests, both our public and our police officers. I thank you all for joining me today, and I thank you for your commitment to helping us lawmakers in creating, implementing strong legislation that helps all the people of Guam. Si tu es ma si, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Chief, if you can go ahead and just identify yourself, and then go ahead and proceed with your testimony, sir.
How far, good afternoon, Chair Sinagastin, Speaker Lai, Senator Brown, and Senator Tadegui. I am Stephen Seignash, the chief of the Guam Police Department, and at this time I'd like to read testimony into the record. How far, the Guam Police Department supports the intent and purpose of Bill Number 188-37, an act to authorize the Guam Police Department to use the unexpendable balance of the appropriation authorized by Section 2 of Public Law 35-22 for the purpose of procuring audiovisual recording equipment to be used during interviews conducted by G P D personnel. Currently, none of our police precincts have any audiovisual recording devices when conducting interviews. In addition, none of our precincts have any type of surveillance and recording systems in place. This $200,000 appropriation will allow the Guam Police Department to not only procure for recording equipment, but it would also enable G P D to purchase equipment for the other areas of the precinct and offices. The procurement and installation of recording equipment for other areas such as the exterior, the monitoring of holding cells for both juveniles and adults, and common areas such as the lobby, must be taken into account. This would probably require fixed camera surveillance systems for the buildings with a central monitoring point such as the desk watch. The money appropriated pursuant to Public Law 35-22 remains unspent. We have made more than one attempt to expend this money, however, there were no bidders when the R F P was issued. The initial intent of Public Law 35-22 was to procure surveillance systems for public areas such as parks. Bill Number 188-37 will allow the Guam Police Department to instead use the money for use on recording equipment primarily for the precincts. At present, the Guam Police Department has two fixed audiovisual recording systems in place at our investigations offices in Tezen. One system is located at our Domestic Assault Response Team, or DART, office, and the second one is at our Criminal Investigations Interview Room. This equipment was purchased using federal grant funds from our Stop Violence Against Women funding source. The two systems include not only the audio-video recording systems, but TV sets to monitor the interview rooms, a four-terabyte storage solution, all required hardware and installation costs. In total, it costs over $6,200 for these two systems. I must caution that this is at our DART office and criminal investigation sections, and we must remember that a precinct, that a precinct is a 24-hour facility that never closes, so policy must be developed to meet the needs which will differ from other offices or sections. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of Bill 188-37, and we look forward to the passing of this bill so that much-needed recording equipment can be procured. Signed, Stephen Ignacio, Chief of Police.
Thank you, Chief. I don't think you're going to have any problem with this bill. This bill is pretty simple. We'll be able to get through. I just ask you to... I just, I'll just ask you to, because the budget's going to be coming up again, be mindful in your budget and let us know that you want some flexibility so we don't have to, you know, see that you need flexibility like, like this bill.
Yes, sir.
If you believe you may need some flexibility, then say so so that we can put it in the budget to give the flexibility so you can continue moving forward. Okay?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief. Senator Tidaway, if you have any questions, to the chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll have my colleagues go ahead first before me and I'll, I'll do the closing with questions. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, do you have any question for the chief and then you'll be followed by Senator Brown?
Thank you. Can I just ask, so the original appropriation was to put cameras at intersections that the police at that time was testifying. Those were like hotspots of crime and so we wanted to put cameras up to help, they thought would help that area, but if, and those were never put up because as you described, no one responded to the RFP.
Right. Absolutely. That's correct. No bidders.
And if we put these into, well, this law is passed, is it, and you described where it might go in the precincts and how you might use it in different areas, not just in interview areas, not in an interview room, but in other areas of the precinct where-
Right. That's correct. So, you know, I'm very concerned about holding cells, juvenile and adult holding cells, because again, through my experience in the past, there have been allegations about maybe police misconduct while people are in holding cells. We've had people attempt to or commit suicide in holding cells. So I think, you know, the, the audiovideo recording would be beneficial in investigations like that.
All right. And so who controls the video, the, after it's recorded?
So currently, with the two systems that we have, because again, like I said earlier, no precinct has one. Currently with the, the way it's set up and designed at the Criminal Investigation Section and DART, so it's, it's a standalone system and so when they're going to use it to record, then they will turn on the recorder, the device is to start recording. Then when it's done, it shuts down. And that's why I wanted to caution because a precinct doesn't have controls like that. It's not, we're open one day, close another day, only eight to five. A precinct is a 24-hour operation, so we're going to have people coming in and out of that precinct throughout the day. So those are the things that we have to be mindful of as we start to procure equipment because as I testified in the body worn camera, trying to save and store 12 hours of recordings is expensive and, you know, I heard the Speaker Cruz testify earlier, you know, technology, you know, is a lot cheaper now, but it still costs money. So whether we're going to use a web-based application, a hard storage device at maybe O-Tech or GPD, if we're running four precincts 24/7, you know, we would have to be careful of not just saving everything. You know, it may be allowed to loop for 24 hours and then if there's something that we need to save, we save it, but then loop again and let it to record all over again.
All right. Are there interviews going on at, at stations as well? So would you, would it be a priority to put it into the interview rooms at every station or you're saying this would be up to that station's discretion?
No, definitely it would be a policy that has to be created where we're going to put it, but I believe interview rooms, because they're, they're interview slash interrogation rooms. In other words, we interview victims or suspects in the same rooms. Holding cells are another area of concern and, you know, if we have enough money, maybe the exterior of the building, because our buildings are open and, you know, we don't want people driving up and creating a threat of an active shooter.
All right. Thank you. No further questions. I, I support this and I, I'm glad that the chief is supporting this and I trust that they will find a very good use for it.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, of course, I'm co-signing this bill with Senator Tidaway. I'm obviously in support of it, but I hope also that not just the implementation to get these cameras in place, but the maintenance, that's a bigger challenge as well. And, you know, always having that ability available, because right now, as you mentioned, even in your precincts, not even having that capability around your building. You don't know who's coming through the door, what their agenda is, and your, your personnel don't have the opportunity to prepare. You know, unfortunately, we, we live in an island now that's very different than the one we grew up on and I think having that capability is almost an absolute necessity. I don't look at it as a luxury. So we certainly look forward to what else we can do and I, I'm sure our chairman will be open to additional support to the Guam Police Department to help address these issues for you and your officers that are out there. So thank you and thank you for coming and providing your testimony.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Senator Brown. And, and Chief, before I ask Senator Tidaway, the author, to ask questions, you, you put out an RFP and nobody responded, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Has there been an IFB put out, you know, asking for information that people can, and the reason why I'm asking that is because, maybe because the $200,000 you got was too little. That's why people are probably like, I'm not going to respond to this, there's, there's no, there's no money in this business.
Yeah, we went, we went back to prospective bidders that, you know, we got quotes from and says, yeah, your, your $200,000 is not enough for what you want to do and all you want to do it.
Okay, well, I would recommend that in the future-
Yeah, we'll, we'll change the approach.
No, but not only that, but if you can, when you get the information, provide it back to, you know, because my vice chair is Senator Tidaway, provide it to us and then we'll look at it and we'll try to figure out how we can give you additional funding. So you can still do it in the hot areas and in addition to protecting the police officers because it's not only the police officer you're going to be protecting, you're protecting also the community because if somebody happens to be walking up to the precinct and you don't have a camera and then somebody goes by and wants to, you know, be an active shooter, it's too late.
Yes, sir.
And, and if we can, we, we need to figure out how to protect both the police officer, I'm a former police officer, I know we need to protect the blues, and then we protect the community at the same time, then everything is, we'll be, we'll be comfortable, especially when you go to court and somebody says, no, I didn't do it, hey, it's right there on the camera.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief. Senator Tidaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to thank my colleagues for their great questions. I can always rely on at least this group of individuals to come up with the, the questions that I had, so I let them go first, but, you know, it's, it's, it is disheartening to hear that the original intent of the $200,000, it was not being utilized to where I thought was really in need and, and that's to protect our community in those hotspots. But this bill doesn't stop you from still continuing to use any kind of funding of the $200,000. That just allows you to use it now for inside the precincts and these interrogation rooms, but you still, you know, can use that money on those outside in the public spaces. So I want you to know that, just in case. And I didn't want to make the bill a requirement, you know, that these cameras must be in, you know, in place because and then it won't avail you of federal funds in which you've actually been receiving for other cameras. But once we start to codify this into law, then it becomes difficult for you to get those federal funds. So there was, really, I didn't want to do that as well. But I can trust that GPD is doing everything you can, not only just to protect, you know, the citizens of Guam, but, you know, your own individuals who put themselves in harm's way every single day for us, for our community, keep us safe, you know, and they always say, when you get on an airplane, you know, you, you put the mask on yourself first before you do your child. So we need to provide you that protection. We need to provide the trust that some people feel they've lost to GPD and I'm pretty sure that, you know, it goes both ways. So I, I appreciate that, you know, you're, you're in support of this legislation, Chief, and of course, working with my office. You mentioned earlier about how long you're going to keep this. I'm pretty sure you would know what's best, especially if you talk with judges or attorneys, you know, asking you, let's hold on to this for about, you know, especially interrogations for how many, you know, a month, 30 days, and then you can empty it out, that. That being said, you know, I, again, thank you. If you want to say anything else, Chief, or before I think-
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, thank you very much for today.
You're very welcome and, and I'm hoping with the chairman will expedite this, these bills, both bills in fact, not just my, you know, Senator Brown's bills today so we can get on the November session and, and get this out right away so you can do your job. I thank you and, and those in blue for your service and keeping us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your support.
Okay.
And to all of you for your support of the Guam Police.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway, and thank you, Chief. Reminder, okay, get ready for the budget, other than what we're going to do, take care of this bill, but please be ready on the budget and be able to identify it so that we can identify the funding. Because I think, once we start protecting the, the officers, it automatically protects the community and then when it deals with the court, then you identify, if you need a, a, a storage bank, then so be it. You know, come up with the costs and then let's work and let's figure this out. Maybe we can get halfway and you can get the other half from federal government, but we'll figure this out, but we've got to be able to, to go over this and cover the bases because it's, it's all, it's all a plus for the people of Guam.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll make sure I work with my procurement office and my ASO to make sure that we do, do our part to change the procurement process and the approach.
All right.
See what we, we do with an IFB.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
I want to thank everyone for attending this hearing and providing feedback and suggestion, being that there's no one here, no one further to attend, to testify on this bill. This hearing is now concluded. Bill 188, that's 37, Cor Public Hearing is now adjourned. The time now is 2:35. Thank you very much all for being here.